I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting of the Silver Consolidated School District. It is November 21st, 2017. It is 6:03 PM. And welcome, members of the board. Welcome, members of administration and the public. Ms. Hernandez, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Here. First, if you all will join me in the standing and the pledge of allegiance and the New Mexico flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Very well. First on our agenda this evening is review and approval of minutes. And we have the October 17th, 2017 work session and the October 17th regular meeting minutes. Those were both in your packet to review. And I believe Ms. Hernandez has a correction on the regular meeting minutes. And that was under information and presentations, correct? It should be Jeannie Coleman?
Jenny.
Jenny Coleman, instead of Jeannie. So that'll be one correction that she's already made on the minutes of the regular meeting, but it was incorrect in our packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of October 17th, 2017 with the edit to Ms. Coleman's name under information and presentations in the regular meeting.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 17th, 2017 work session and regular meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is consideration and approval of the agenda. Any comments, concerns on our regular meeting agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the approval of the board agenda.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Next on our agenda this evening is information presentations, which are non-action items to the board. And first up is the SCEA. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Hope you guys are ready for a quick Thanksgiving. It always seems the holidays come and go so quickly, you know. Well, of course, thank you for always having us here and letting us give an update about the goings-on in the district. I thought that the meeting was going to be in Cliff today, so I had to call Samantha because I was almost certain that they have, like, the November meeting was in Cliff because I remember last year a deer hit my car. And so Mr. McMillan pulled the bumper off my Jeep and everything. But I, so I called Sam and she said it was here because I was, like, a little bit confused. But it's good to be here regardless of where the meeting is. So to move on, a few weeks ago, we received an okay from Mr. Brown to send out emails asking for volunteers from the district regardless of their membership status with SCEA to start talking about and begin our quest to renew discussion about a four-day calendar that would hopefully start at the 2018-19 school year. And contrary, and despite the rumors that are circulating, we are going to proceed knowing that we will have put forth our best efforts in finding the appropriate data and information that you, our school board members, and the two new seats are looking for. And we would want you and any of the future school board members to be able to make a thoughtful, deliberate, and appropriate decision based on the information presented. Also, I do need to say that in my years as a member of SCEA and as the president of this organization, we have not had as many workers' rights issues as we have had in this semester. It's not bad everywhere, but when we have teachers and staff who feel they're being chastised for asking questions or speaking out, staff members who feel the best option is to keep their heads down and not disturb the waters, one has to wonder if there's not a bigger issue or issues that we are not acknowledging. We know that it can be stressful for everyone, especially when evaluations seem to be ever-changing, when there seems to be a lack of communication, when employees arrive before and leave after their contract day, when the chain of command is broken, when it seems as though our only focus is teaching to the test, and when the work environment becomes one that is no longer enjoyable. We have to ask, where is this stemming from? Our goal at SCEA is to ensure that employees are heard, that their voices are not silenced, and that the integrity of the CBA as it is written now is not violated. As a district community, we are constantly working to help each other. I see it at my school site. I hear it from others that, you know, constantly that teamwork effort is happening, and that's good to see despite all of, you know, what seems to be a bombardment of negative energy. I know that we can work together to fix it, and hopefully, and maybe this little break over this Thanksgiving holiday will be what we need as a district, as work sites, to come back and finish the last few weeks of this winter or fall semester positively and productively. So we look forward to the special meetings and hearing from our community members who are going to apply for the open seats. And we look forward to seeing, you know, what shape the school board is going to take and how we can all work together to move our district always positively forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would I ask questions? Are we allowed to ask questions?
I think if you want to address a question or a concern, yes, you or myself can.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
I do have a question, actually a concern.
Yes.
Some of the issues that you have just raised have not been brought forward to administration, to my understanding. And therefore, in the spirit of communication, working together, as you were talking about teamwork, it would be nice if, before you came in a public session like this, you came to administration and said, here's some concerns, here's some issues. Can we talk about them, work on them, whatever the case might be?
We have done that in the past. It's unfortunate that, yes, it had to be brought up in public session. So we can work in our email and we can schedule something to talk about some of these things that have come up. We will, you know, again, work to keep those lines of communication open, and that is something that has faltered in the last few weeks or months. So that's something that, you know, I know I need to work on and other, you know, admins also. You know, it's just, like I said, it's just a breakdown of the communication, so.
Yes, clearly it is. And so I would like to request that, absolutely.
Okay.
Because we're more than willing to meet.
Yeah, because we haven't had our, you know, monthly or bi-month or bi-weekly meeting that we used to have. It's just things have gotten a little busy around here for all of us, so.
Yes. And just because I'm sure that members of the SCEA would appreciate that respect as well.
Mm-hmm.
So that's all we're asking for.
Sure.
Thank you.
We can do that, yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Awesome. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too. Next on our agenda under information to the board, Mr. Ward.
Mr. President, members of the board, and of course, Mr. Brown. I'm coming here tonight and I have really no real set idea. I have a generalized idea of what I'm supposed to do because it said update. I'm sitting there going, well, there is no real update on what the C-MAR stands because we, Mr. Brown had said he needed to think about things, and there's really been no decision on how we're going to procure anything for our contracting stuff. But he did want me to share a little bit of ideas about what my thoughts are from my perspective about the pros and cons of when one might do something like this and why it would make sense. Okay? I think the most important thing, if I can get it across, is to pay as little attention to the semantics of the title of the procurement style and understand that you're basically, regardless of how you're procuring this or what you want, what system you want to go by, you're looking at hiring a general contractor to perform construction services for the district in both cases that we're talking about right now. Up until about five years ago, give or take, I'm not sure exactly, K through 12 Public Education did not do any general contracting or contract service procurement other than through competitive bidding, which is basically low bid, gets all, you know, and that's, as long as it's within what's called the maximum allowable construction cost, which is a fancy way of saying the district's budget for doing a project. And if you were within that realm and you met the criteria and you were a qualified bidder, the low bidder got the project. And that's worked, you know, fine. Now, there are advantages to that and there are disadvantages to that. It's a system that works really well, in my experience, in smaller construction projects, meaning, when I'm talking smaller, I'm thinking more on the line of less than $1 million that are in a more finite definition. Say something like removing and replacing the daycare center would be a perfect candidate, I think, for something like that. It's a smaller project, it's in a smaller space, it's following basic general construction procedure and process. There aren't a lot of moving parts, and it's not spread out over a lot of space. And it's, it's less complicated in that respect. Now, on an RFP for a construction manager at risk, the name can be confusing because you're still looking at just hiring a general contractor. It's all on how that person is hired and what kind of flexibility and transparency and control you have over the entire project through that procurement view. If you, one of the things that's really, I find is a difficulty with competitive bidding is that the lowest price isn't necessarily the best because there are always going to be change orders. The larger the project, the larger the change order percentage usually grows because there's more room for things to expand. Another thing that's really difficult on a management level and a control level that the district, that I don't like in the district position, is that once you hire the general contractor, all the rest of the contractors and subcontractors, et cetera and so forth, are really out of the district's control. You really don't have any say in who those contractors are. They're whoever the general contractor decides to hire. So you have a very limited amount of control over who's on the project and things of that nature. And the number is the number. You don't get to negotiate that number. The only change is in the contractor through the change orders. And with a C-MAR-type procurement, the thing that I find most fascinating and advantageous in certain circumstances is that it is not limited to the low bid, although it can be the low bid because it is a qualifications-based bid. And we define what those qualifications are when we request the proposal for people who are interested in doing the project that we want to have done. Things like financials, bondability, experience, references, you know, body of work that they've accomplished, verifiable references, and an entire slew of how they put project costs together with percentages. So say, like, what is their markup going to be for, how are they going to calculate contingencies? How are they going to calculate a subcontractor's cost and the contractor's markup, which is a fair deal? What is their markup going to be? You know, all the pieces that go into putting together a total construction cost, you know what those numbers are. And all of those numbers are negotiable. So the first step would then be, you know, you select this person, and you have all this stuff that goes into putting the numbers together. So here's probably where the manager, management name came into play, is that general contractor you select would then go out and solicit bids from a multitude of subcontractors, multitude of vendors for equipment and things of that nature. And then you, he brings all that information in, you're able to sit down with those people or with those numbers and that contractor and the design people, and you can discuss it. It's all right out there and open. And you can pick and choose who it is you want. And all those things, those selections you're making, get plugged into the numbers in the contract, and you basically are building what the construction cost will be. So you have more control over those aspects, all towards the goal of controlling what your construction cost is. Another great thing I think about that process is, is when you start looking at bigger projects, since Tatch has left or has closed up shop, there really isn't a large contractor here that is, that has the capacity to do some of the larger projects that we're discussing doing with the bond projects, which eliminates a lot of the possibility of our local people getting involved in those particular projects. Whereas in this process, you'd be able to then say, we have these contractors we'd like included in the bid process, these contractors that are all local people, and they've got as much shot to get into it as anybody else. And it's all gone through a fair and open communication in making those decisions. So I think it helps to keep local businesses involved, which also then turns around and helps keep local money in the locale, in the city. So I think that's a net positive. When you look at, I was interested in finding out how the total costs ended up being working out on an average, just say, dollar-for-dollar size projects comparable, what's the big difference? Is there a big difference between one versus the other? And it kind of ranges. The smaller projects, it sort of equalizes out. The bigger the project gets, the difference becomes much larger. And I got those numbers because PSFA has been accumulating that data, comparing projects, contract types, da-da-da-da, all the time since they started using this for public schools. And what they told me they found is on larger projects, let's just say $10 million, for instance, just as a number we can work with and it's easy to play with. On a competitive bid for a project that they expect to cost somewhere around $10 million, by the time they get done with change orders, et cetera, the final construction cost has changed from $10 million to $11. It's a 10% increase. Same-sized project, when they use, have used C-MARS in the past, the average cost ends up going down 10%. So that's nine instead of 10, it's nine. So there's a 20% spread in costs on larger projects. Now, can you expect that kind of thing all the time? I don't think so. I think those numbers will change and range. But what it tells me and what I think they're looking at, how they look at it, and what I take out of that is, is that the larger, more complicated projects, I think, are more suited to the district's, to prudent use of district capital and to outcomes, to use the one type, one procurement system versus the other. Something like Harrison-Schmidt that has a lot of different pieces all over the entire campus, which will extend into the school year with a lot of complicated logistics so nothing happens there, I think would be better suited for an RFP to a construction manager at risk. Will the district decide to do that or the administration? I don't know. But I think there's a positive, there's a positive to that that I think warrants consideration. Either way will work. It's just do these positives outweigh these positives. And that's a decision somebody's going to have to make at some point in time. On another thing, something that I've been playing with here for the past week, that I'm pretty excited about, actually, is for the first time in the 12 and a half years I've been here, the district's actually had money to do construction projects, and PNM has incentives. And incentives that actually we can take advantage of if we so choose, that are actually, I think, pretty good. Some of the things that we've talked about doing with bond money are finishing up our mechanical equipment replacements, and they have decent incentives for those replacements. So whatever our costs are, we'll get money back from PNM just for doing the work. So that will minimize some costs a little bit. The more exciting one for me, though, is the possibility of converting the district over to LED lighting versus the fluorescents and incandescent lights that we do have. They have a couple of programs that we can take advantage of. The one that covers the majority of the district is called the Quick Start program. And that's for any facility that is using 200 KW or less. And we just started, I met with the PNM electrical engineer at Los Prusas last Wednesday, I believe, Thursday. And we started going over the scenario. He started crunching numbers, and I got the first preliminary results back. And it looks like every campus we are located in the district, with the exception of the high school, possibly Cliff, undecided yet, fits into that category. Now, the nice thing about that one is, is they will pick up 40% of the cost to do right off the bat. And the high school, they, is done a little differently. It's done by giving you X amount of dollars per kilowatt reduction in power. Basically penciling that out, he and I, that afternoon, it came to be about $30,000 in just rebates to do the work. The preliminary estimates I'm getting on for cost savings to the electric utility are perhaps the best thing for the district, and that's somewhere in the neighborhood of a third or around $100, $100-plus thousand dollars per year annually out of our operational budget. And that's ongoing. So I'm sort of following through to find out what real numbers are as far as our savings go, what the whole thing will cost, so that we can kind of take a look at that and decide whether that's something we might want to take advantage of. But it seems almost like a middle granger, as long as it doesn't cost 10 times the money that we have, or something. But that's kind of all I really could think of to come up and kind of share with you all this evening. And I hope that answered some questions that may have been in some of your minds, and if not, throw them at me and I'll do the best I can to.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, obviously, we want to approve a C-MAR, to hopefully do economies of scale and, you know, be able to budget ourselves out. And then you mentioned that you think a different way would be, the RFP process would be better at Harrison. We can't do both, right? We have to choose?
The procurement, the procurement title is an RFP or a request for proposal for a construction manager at risk, C-MAR. So the RFP and the C-MAR, basically, I'm talking about the same thing.
Okay.
Okay.
And you, what did you think would be better at Harrison, though? Not a C-MAR, is that correct?
If Harrison is, we're in a good place right now. We're moving real forward with the designs and stuff. We're waiting on civil engineering and things to sort of finalize some of the structural engineering for foundations and whatnot, and grading and drainage for outside work with the additional paving and that type of thing. That's the phase we're at now. Once that's in, we should be able to finish that stuff up and hopefully be able to go out to solicit contractor, you know, someone to do this. I'm hoping by the end of January, which gives us a nice, long lead time to put all kinds of plans and work through some of the details and difficulties and stuff ahead of time. Now that I've taken up my time globulating, I forgot what your question.
I thought the recommendation was that you would see would work best out there was not a C-MAR.
Yeah. I think out there, if it's, if the project stays laid out the way it is and the administration doesn't decide to change it into something else for budgetary concerns or whatever may come out, if we follow through with it that way, I think doing it in a C-MAR fashion would be the most advantageous means of doing it.
Okay. That's the clarification.
We could do it with, we could do it with the high school, but I don't see that there's as much, or the daycare, but I don't see it as being as much of an advantage.
So we can pick and choose? Is that what you're saying?
It kind of depends upon the project, how big it is, how complicated, versus how small and more manageable it is.
And we can do both?
You can do both.
Okay.
There's also the possibility that when you go through the RFP so that you don't have to go through it multiple times, you can do an RFP and create your base master agreement, sort of like what we did with the architect. And if things work out well with the first one they're working on, because these are going to be multi-year deals, you could all, you could then turn around and extend it into the next project. But you could do any combination of this stuff.
Okay.
And it's all kind of up to, you know, administration's discretion and what seems like it will be the most reasonable and expedient and cost-effective for us.
Great, thank you.
I like that you came up with the idea of the LED lighting.
I was just reading about it, and Arizona's been doing some monumental rebates and stuff through their utility companies. So I just decided, well, one more time, I'll try PNM, and they surprised me.
And that should save the district some money, going to LED. That's really an idea.
Well, we're looking at $1,000, that's two teachers' salaries.
Mm-hmm. That's, I commend you for thinking of that. Thank you. And always, you know, I've had some constituents within the district also just say, you know, to remind, you know, the administration just to stay local, which I know, like you said, that's hard to control within the contractor. But just to throw it out, when you do talk to them, to stay local, sometimes we can't help to, you have to go out to outside sources or the contractor, but they say, well, we voted for the bond. We want to make sure, you know, that we get a piece of the pie. But I know you do your very best on doing what you do, and I commend you for everything you do, Barry.
Thank you. And I agree, I think it's not only the right thing to do, but all possible, I think it's just a monumentally positive PR for the district.
Mr. Ward, a couple of questions that I have on the, on the C-MAR, where I was confused with the presentation the gentleman did from the architect firm was, was the, the cost for the C-MAR. And he'd said, well, there's no additional cost. And that's what kind of really threw me off on that presentation was, because I was, I thought, well, it sounds like we're going to have to hire somebody. There's got to be an additional cost for that. And so that's where I really got, I think, thrown off on his presentation. And it wasn't clear if that, and to me, was that part of the architect services? Was it something that was completely separate? And that, that's kind of where, I guess, my, my questions and concerns are, is if we do the C-MAR method, is that something that's a defined cost? Say it's, you know, 1% of the project, or is that set up front? Or is there, if there's cost savings, is that then shared at the end? And that's kind of where I was, or most of my questions were regarding. And that's kind of where I was, or most of my questions were regarding the C-MAR.
The important, like they said at the onset, but to remember is, is that both processes are to accomplish the exact same thing, because what you're hiring is a general contractor. It's all in what that general contractor does and how, more importantly, it is done with the district. Whether you go with, whether you did it through competitive bid or through the C-MAR process, there will always be markup, because contractor makes a profit. The larger the project, the smaller the markup. Typically, let's just use the ten million dollar example, I would expect, you know, five to seven percent is what I would think would be typical for the general contractor on a competitive bid. On a C-MAR, you can get to less than that, because all those numbers are negotiable, because you get that in the RFP. There are markups for contingencies. You don't, you don't end up with as many change orders, because you've kind of looked at and decided, this is what it is. And when you write the contractor, the PO for, for a construction manager at risk, it is basically a contract that I'll do it with this as a, for my base bid, cost plus anything else. They're basically saying, I will build this project as you have it defined here for this amount of money, period. Now, they have something in there, and the way they deal with that is what, through what's called a contingency. We'll figure there's going to be eight percent contingency for the unknown stuff that comes up. But in the contract, you turn around and say, anything that's not in the contract or not used up in the project, district gets the money back, you don't get it. That doesn't happen in competitive bids.
Right.
You know? So, and, and in the data that PSFA is coming up with, the average is, they come in, even with that defined cost of what, of what they will build the project at, their defined costs are coming in less than what your allowable cost is. On larger projects, understand, you know, the smaller they get, like say the daycare, they might be pretty equal. So your benefit may not be, the cost benefit may not be worth going through the extra time and effort to do something like that.
And, and your thought would be to have an RFP for that C-MAR?
For something like, like Harrison, I think, I think it's a good advantage for You could, if you didn't, like, the reason I like putting the other project out to bid on a competitive bid scenario is, is pretty much the same reason, because you could actually roll that into the C-MAR for next summer, and it could be done by the same general contractor. You know, you have that flexibility. However, it also falls into the small enough project that are our local contractors that can do something that size, because we're thinking somewhere in the five to six hundred thousand dollar range. There are people here that are qualified and capable of doing stuff like that, and I've already talked to at least a couple of them, and I know that have expressed interest. So why not give the local people the opportunity is kind of the way I was thinking.
Sounds good. And that, that was my question, was the cost was, how was that?
But there's not an additional, like, service for this, and I think part of that's the confusion of construction manager rather than general contractor, general contractor kind of thing. Because you think you're actually hiring something additional, and you're really not. You're just hiring a different process.
Right.
If that makes that any clearer. More so than mode, I think.
And then in regards to the LED lighting, I think that is a, a great opportunity for the district, or a great project for the district to look at. I know Western, I think, maybe two years ago, redid all their exterior lighting, LED, and so that might be a, a resource to see. I'm not sure if they did PNM programs or not, or if they went through USDA, has some grants as well, but it might be a resource for, as you move forward as well. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Next on our agenda, agenda is Mr. Mylum, Silver High, and update on the senior trip.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. First two things to apologize about. First one being, sorry about my appearance. Had to hurry and get out of rest of practice. And I apologize if I'm looking at you kind of weird. One of my kids thought it was awesome, would give me a good crossface before I came over ready. So I'm like, okay. So the reason I'm coming before you tonight is to discuss what changes have been made to the contract. After getting the email from the lawyer that had been submitted to him, there were two things that we had changed. The first one is, under the parent guardian, we admitted some things, and the lawyer felt that it was best to change it to as follows. Number three, a student will be subjected to discipline up to and including suspension, expulsion, in accordance with the district's student disciplinary metrics and the New Mexico law up to and including suspension or expulsion. And then the next thing that had been omitted was that they wouldn't, students would not be underneath silver care, so we admitted that. So under section one, under the parent guardian, it now reads as follows, if a violation occurs, local authorities will be contacted. Parents slash guardians will have to make arrangements with the authorities to go pick up your child. And the last and final thing, I did it backwards, but underneath the hello, parents and guardians, section three was changed and modified to as follows, a student must not exceed the seven unexcused absences for the second and third nine weeks. So the reason why we had put it for second and third nine weeks, because the students now are within the second and third nine weeks, we can't go after the kids for the first nine weeks, since we, they didn't have the contract then. The last thing on the second page, I went ahead and modified it and took out the park hopper, just because it simplified things a lot, especially for costs. These have been handed out to the parents. The cost participate on the trip is three hundred and fifty dollars. The minimum number needed to attend the field trip is eighty students, the maximum number allowed is a hundred students, as we had discussed before. The projected date to travel is March twenty seventh through the twenty ninth of two thousand and eighteen. So nothing else had really changed on the second page. Are there any questions at all pertaining to this?
How close are you to eighty?
We, right now, as of today, we're at sixty-four students, so that have signed up. There were some seniors I talked to, they had the misconception that they had to have the three hundred and fifty dollars right now before they could sign up. So we're gonna hold another meeting and put it on the Facebook page to let students know that you do not need to have that right now, just put your name on there, just to secure your spot. And one of the students is already deciding to choose what bus seat he wants. He brought me a map of the buses, and he goes, I want this. I was like, oh, you gotta hold it ahead of yourself, yeah. And so, any other questions? So.
Yes, sir.
Just thank you for taking the time again to putting this together for the students, you and Mrs. McMillan. It'll be a well, pleasant experience for our senior class and be worthwhile. So I wanna thank you for committing yourself, yourselves, and doing this.
Oh, absolutely. And Mrs. McMillan is, is an awesome individual with helping with this. Again, this is, this is for the kids. I really, really wanna make it a memorable one, but at the same time, as you guys can see on the first page, safe. We don't want any shenanigans, and that's one of my favorite words in my vocabulary, shenanigans. And so, really, really wanna avoid that. These have been passed out to the parents, they have been, some of them returned back. If at any time the board has any questions, or if you come up with any questions, please go ahead and give me a call, or you can email me, and I'll be happy to go ahead and update you. If you would like, any of the board members or anyone in attendance, you can go to our Facebook page to follow how things are progressing. It's underneath S-H-S Fighting Colts Class of Two Thousand and Eighteen. You'd be super surprised, we had to make it really long, because a lot of other schools that are, acronyms S-H-S, decide to take everything. So there were a bunch of, a bunch of other schools, so we had to make it super long. But we welcome anyone to go ahead and go on to there, follow along, and see how things are progressing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Pretty well, next on our agenda this evening is three superintendent, Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, members of the board, community members, there's a scheduled in-service for January eighth and January ninth, two thousand and eighteen, when we return from the winter break. And Cliff and OHS Opportunity High School are currently scheduled, with the current calendar, to have students on the ninth. They are off on the eighth, but on the ninth. We are trying to provide professional development district-wide for every staff member throughout the district. And in order to be able to move forward as one district and everybody receive the exact same professional development, we have asked the principals and staff at each location, Cliff and OHS, to reschedule January ninth, so that the staff will be able to participate in the professional development activities. That would prevent us from having to hire the same company, which is Solution Tree, to come out again at some other point in time, incurring additional costs to the district. And so Cliff is, they are over on their hours, and so that should not be an issue. And Opportunity High School is going to change that, the Friday of that same week, in exchange for that Tuesday. So that should not be an issue. And then the early dismissal for Thanksgiving and Christmas break. We are looking at, it's my understanding that in the past, the district has closed the office as well, central office, that is, as well as all two sixty-day employees at half-day for the Thanksgiving, for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, in other words, tomorrow, half-day as well as the twenty-first of December, if I recall correctly.
It's a Thursday, yeah, the twenty-first.
And notices will be going out to the, to the paper and posted on the building as well.
Is it the Friday?
It's the Thursday.
Oh, then it's the twenty-first.
Thank you. And then item C, as in Charles, school and district handbooks will be presented to the school board at an upcoming time, probably during the summer, after updates are in place.
Great.
And that would be for the following school year?
That's correct. Okay, sir.
Any questions from the board, Mr. Brown?
I, I expressed yesterday when you called me about the early dismissal. I just wanna get those and the contracts for next year, so it's very clear. I know you're new, we're new, we all don't know what just the norm is, but I think we should just spell it out, so that it's very transparent, everyone knows.
I definitely agree.
And so definitely for those half-days, and then the, the Cliff, the Cliff one two, we'll just get it in there. There's not bad.
Sounds good. We'll definitely do that in the future.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
You bet.
Ms. Mylum, you're next on our agenda. Do you have any information for the board?
Mr. President, members of the board, I apologize tonight for not giving you a hand, I mean, a typed-up enrollment. We've been so busy with professional development for the principals this whole last month, and then with getting Eliminate, which is our new testing, started, it's kind of consumed a lot of my time. But we are down, we are only down one student. Our current enrollment is two thousand five hundred eighty-one, which is down just one student from October eleventh. So this is the smallest decrease we've had in a long time, so we were pretty, pretty pumped about that. So the other thing is, we're finding, just wanted to tell you about Eliminate, we, we're finding that it tests common core standards. And our curriculum, the order, the pacing that we use in our, our different schools is not following the Eliminate, which is nationwide. And so we're, you know, we're finding that we're going to have to adjust some of our teaching in the chronological order of certain things. And that's gonna take a little bit of, of working with the teachers, because they're, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to break what you've been doing for several years. So we're working on that with them, with, through our coaches and our coordinators, and, but they, so far, it's been very positive about how easy the test has been to access, much easier than discovery was. They love the reports. We had a, a training with the principals and test coordinators last week, and they were, they just loved it. So there's a lot of good, positive things about Eliminate, that this is going to be a learning year for us to, to have, better use it in our classrooms, but we're looking forward to it. So you might hear some comments from teachers and all about it, so. And that's all I have.
Questions from the board?
So will, I do, I'm sorry. So will we not be ready for the test because of the way we are structured this year, but then hopefully next year?
It's a little bit different pace than what it was before, but it's still, the, the bottom line is, is you have to be ready for the park. And that's what this is geared towards. It's, it's, it's targeting the areas and how they test the kids. And it's not teaching to the test. It's, you're, you're putting the order in a better sequence, and they feel there's a flow to it for, for kids to be able to learn easier. So that's the purpose of it.
Cool, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Ms. McCain.
Yes, I was, we, the auditors were in Stone McGee, and they completed their audit. They left us on, a week ago Friday, and they had to have our audit into the state auditor by November the fifteenth, which I understand they meant their deadline. We are not allowed to release any information from the audit or the results of the audit until the state auditor has released the audit. And so we are just waiting for that final approval from them, which should come probably usually late December, early January.
Any other questions or comments from the board? No. Thank you, Ms. McCain. Next on our agenda is Board of Education, and first up is the Finance Subcommittee.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, community. I met yesterday with Mrs. McCain as well as Mrs. Alvarado, and we went over the transactions from the prior recording month. We now sit at a six point one four percent balance. So that, that means that of our whole budget, we still have six point one four retained for the future. And some things that I just tried to say, how to kind of explain this, you'll see, at this same time last year, we were at six point nine nine percent, which means about one point six million. And something that's changed from last year to this year that I just kind of reflected on, because they're still very close numbers, but sometimes people wanna know the reasons for the differences. This time last year, we had a superintendent that was temporary, and so he was taking a reduced salary. We also had a lot of retirements mid-year, and so that affected, that, you know, positively affected our, our numbers for last year. But the number that we're sitting at right now is obviously what the state likes us to have, actually more than, it's one point four million. have, um, actually more than, it's one-point-four million. And, again, keep in mind, our budget is reduced by a million dollars from last year. So, last year, we had a twenty-four million dollar budget. This year, we're operating on a twenty-three million dollar budget. And, um, we've still been able to keep staffing lower, uh, to the tune of almost a million dollars, like nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars is what we're spending less. Um, so, it, uh, I think we're sitting at a really good place. I think, um, hiring and those sort of different things are kind of settling down, the positions are getting filled, there is some turnover in some of our less, uh, full-time positions, cafeteria and stuff like that. But I think that's pretty normal. So, I think, um, we have, the dust has kind of settled. So, um, we should be able to compare more apples to apples. That's all I have.
Thank you. A question that, that I have, uh, on, I guess maybe a specific question on the, on the budget, is what do, how do we, how are we looking on our substitutes? Because that's been, I think, uh, an expense in the past, um, that's been rather high, and, where are we this year on that?
Well, actually, we're probably going to be at the same point as we are, were last year, simply because we have done so much more professional development, and it's pulled some of the teachers out of the classroom, in order to go to these different trainings. And so, we've had to, of course, fill those positions with substitutes. So, you know, we're not seeing a big decrease in that, but we're seeing it for a good reason. You know, they're, they're allowing the, the teachers to have the opportunity to go to these professional developments, so that hopefully it'll help their jobs a little ea, um, make their jobs a little easier.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is Board President. And, um, first, I'd like to say, um, it was after our last meeting, and Ms. Voskis had, uh, submitted her letter of resignation, and, and it was really kind of a, a shock to me, and a surprise, and, um, uh, but that, that was certainly her decision, and, and I want to, uh, thank her for her, her years of service on the board, and her, her work that she put forth as a board member, and, uh, so just want to, um, publicly thank her for, for serving on the board, and I enjoyed working with her on the board, and, uh, will miss her here, but, uh, um, so that's, that's, uh, the first thing that I wanted to address. Um, secondly, um, want to, uh, we're, we're at the end of, uh, the, the school week, and wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, the remainder of the week, and, uh, if you're traveling, I hope you, uh, travel safely. That's all my comments. Ms. Martin Agnew?
Yes. I would echo that, uh, Mr. McMillan about Frances, um, and just thank her for her service, especially under the prior administration. It was not, it was not easy, um, and so, there's probably a lot of things that she's had to deal with since. Um, I, I want to wish her well. You know, she just felt like this wasn't, um, something that was healthy for her right now, and so, I, I, I honor her for recognizing when something just isn't working for you, and being able to step away. Um, I think there is lots of fear and concern in, within the community, about what is going on, um, with this board. Um, this board is not making any decisions. This board is following the chain of command. This board, um, hired Mr. Brown to do a job, and he has his distinct, uh, personal, um, management style, shall we call it. And, um, we need to let him do his job until we have a concern, um, otherwise. And so, I think that's important, um, as a board, that we support our superintendent as long as he is, um, doing the things that we, as a board, see best for Silver Schools. Um, I just want to reassure people that there are people out there that want to serve on this board with us, um, that want to, um, make Silver Schools a better place for their children, for their grandchildren, um, to give back to a school district that gave so much to them. Um, and I know that we're going to be okay. We will find the people to fill the seats, and we will move forward in a positive, um, fashion, to the betterment of Silver Schools. So, I just want everybody to re, be reassured that all, all is well. Um, it was, it was unfortunate that Patrick moved, I'm sorry, that Justin moved and could not retain his seat, and, as well as Mrs. Voskis, that she felt a need to move on, because I feel like her voice, to me, I could just, she was just, I saw things so much differently than her, but when we communicated, um, I could see her point of view as well, and so, I will, I'll miss that, and I let her know that. You know, I don't see things the way you see them, and so, it's, it was very valuable to me, so. We're going to be okay. And happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy your break, and get some rest.
Thank you. Mr. Khan?
Uh, and I mimic both my, my fellow board members' responses on Mrs. Voskis. Um, it was, you know, I enjoyed being on the board with her. Um, I, I, when I did, uh, find out, I was shocked, however, um, reading her response in the paper made me feel very negative towards us on the board, which I, I, I didn't, that I disliked, but, um, like, um, Ashley, Ashley well said, you know, she's on, moving on to her, her own endeavors, I wish her well. Um, and I look forward to the next two upcoming school board members that I'm going to be dealing with, or not dealing with, but, um, working with, uh, having the honor of working with. So, um, I, I feel we're pretty strong. Um, I enjoy work, I feel like we, I work with Mike, and, and Ashley, and, and, and Mr. Brown, and Linda. Um, I want to wish everybody a, a happy Thanksgiving, and wish all fall activities good luck on there in Denver's. Um, I got the opportunity to, going to Harrison Schmidt, and, uh, attending their Veterans Day performance. Um, the effort that the, the teachers and administration there at Harrison Schmidt put forward was outrageous. Uh, it was very heartfelt, a lot of teary eye. Um, I did ask Mr. Patsif to, to play a video of the students. They did do, um, a song where they did, uh, um, they, they sang, and they did, sang language. And what Ms. Billings, uh, said, you know, short time, they learned it, and it was just outst, I, I was, it was just phenomenal. I wanted to just share that with. That, the purpose of me serving on this board is, is for that reason. Um, I'm very proud to represent the students of this district, and I, I'm not going to cry, because I'm, I'm so proud with these students, of the outpour that they come up with, their hard work, and these teachers. It's phenomenal. Um, I, I do want to thank Mrs. Roxanne August to letting me share that video, um, and I hope you guys enjoy that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. That was a gr, great idea, and I was unable to, uh, attend any of the, the Veterans Days events, so it was a great idea to share that here. Thank you. Um, next under, on our agenda, under Board of Education, we have, uh, Cliff FCC LA Support for Travel Expenses. And I think what this, uh, relates to is the region meeting that we had out at Cliff. Um, we want to ensure that that, that pro, that program provided the dinner for everybody, and we want to make sure that, um, uh, they, that all their expenses are covered. So, I think we were looking at maybe a figure of five hundred dollars, I think was what, um, we wanted to, uh, to provide to that program for their efforts in providing dinner for our, our region meeting out at, uh, out at Cliff. I think it was very well done, and we certainly don't want to put them out for, uh, any funds for, for them doing that for us, so. Any other, any other thoughts on, on that? I think five hundred dollars is what would cover that, that expense.
That should be sufficient. They worked very hard, and, um, they did a very well, uh, they did a very well, excellent job on, on doing the catering and preparing the, the meal for, for our fellow board members and the other, uh, region, the districts, and us, so. It's, I think, I believe it's very well deserved.
And that would be out of, that would be out of the Board of Education, um, funds. Very well, next on our agenda is limited public comment. Ms. Hernandez, have we had anybody submit any, uh, comment, forms for comment tonight? Very well, and next is, um, action items. And first up is our consent agenda. The, um, one budget, uh, finance reports through, uh, one A through E, and two A through C.
Okay, um, first of all, we have, um, we're seeking approval for the checks written for the month of October. We, um, wrote two million, six hundred and one thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and twelve cents in expenditures for that month, including payroll and everything else. Um, and then, under B, for our, um, budget adjustment requests, we have one that is an actual increase on budget, and that is, we had our initial award of our dual-credit instructional materials, in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, the way the PED works is, they give us an initial allocation of eighty-five percent of the total amount that they're going to give us. If we do expend all this, which we usually do, then they will, um, award us the final fifteen percent, uh, sometime in February or March. And then, um, the, um, three other budget adjustment requests that we had were for Title One, IDEA B, and, um, the Title Two, teacher training and, and recruiting. And basically, those are all just budget cleanups, where, you know, we've got all of our salaries in, and have everybody in, in position and everything, so now we're doing a budget cleanup, just to make sure that all of our functions are in alignment and in balance, and that we don't have anything that's, um, out of compliance with the Public Ed Department. Okay? And then, finally, on that list in that section, is we have, um, two donations. Um, we have from Grant County Title Company, one thousand dollars coming to La Plata Middle School Reading Plus Program. And then, from the Dollar General Literacy Foundation, there is, um, a three-thousand-dollar grant that was also received to the La Plata, um, Middle School for their youth literacy grant. And my understanding is, um, Ms. Wistios runs that program. She has, I think, a better idea of exactly how it works. I know that she buys, um, online training for the students.
Yeah, it's, um, that four thousand dollars pays for fifty seats for students. Um, right now, I'm using it with my seventh-grade students, and Mrs. Cross is using it with her upper-level eighth-grade students. And it helps students, um, with vocabulary acquisition, reading comprehension. There are writing questions that are similar to what is on the PARC. And, um, this is the second year that we've used this program. Last year, around this time, um, we had Eddie from the IT department furiously installing servers, and wiring everything up, and, and getting that all set, and, um, the program starts, they have a, a, a pre-assessment where it places them, um, and we have found that, um, typically, students are reading anywhere from four to five grade levels below where they are supposed to be. And by the end of the program, they have caught up at least two grade levels. So, I mean, it, it doesn't sound like a lock in the grand scheme of things, but when you have seventh and eighth graders who are reading, who have tested at a first grade or second grade level, that has to tell us something that, you know, we're, where we are as far as reading comprehension. And that ties in with, um, Eliminate, and so, we're going to see how that data works together. Um, in the next couple weeks, before the semester's over, we're going to do a midpoint benchmark assessment, to see how our students have grown. And just, you know, checking daily, or whenever we do use the program, we can see that we have, uh, students who are leveling up. So, they are moving from that first and second grade level up to, you know, grade level by grade level. They have to pass each, um, part of the program within eighty percent or better, and it won't let them advance until we do that. And so, um, this was the second year that we got the grant, and, um, over at Grant County Title, I was talking to them about it, and they said, well, how much more money? And so, they donated the thousand dollars that we needed. Um, so hopefully, we can, uh, see that improvement, work with Eliminate, to see where it is that we, you know, our students are lacking, at least for that fifty. Ideally, it would be nice if we could get it for our whole school, for the whole district, um, because I used it when I was teaching high school, and you could tell the improvement with the vocabulary and their comprehension there. And we can definitely see it now here at the middle school, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you pick and choose who gets those fifty seats based on their current reading level?
Based on, yeah, well, what we were using was Discovery. And so, um, last year, since it was the first year I had done it, we, we had thought that we should also do it with the, um, upper-level students, to see what kind of growth that happened with them, because last year, it was strictly just, you know, our, our lower-performance students. We could see the growth, but we also needed to see, you know, in my reflection back on recording the data to the grant, um, was that we also needed to see what was going on with our upper levels, and how we can help them. Because this program goes all the way up to college level, with their reading and vocabulary and writing and everything. So, right now, it's just specific, based on Discovery stories.
Anything else, Ms. McCain, on that?
That is everything.
So, we've got, um, before us, an action item, our consent agenda, one A, one, total checks, checks written, the three budget adjustment requests, no awards or proposals, the two donations, uh, no conflict of interest disclosures, and none under two A, B, or C.
No, I, I do have, yes.
Or that's, um, I apologize, Ms. Mylum?
That's okay. Um, I have, I gave you a revised copy of the vehicle, the activity vehicle drivers. Um, we, Sandra got several more of them trained, so we're looking at, I believe, there's twelve new ones on there. And there's also- And there's also a feeder route. Carrie Rice needs, is revised and added on there. So those are the revisions that we need to have approved tonight, that we're asking for approval.
Thank you. Now, we have our action item consent agenda, A. One, our financial reports, amount, checks written, our donation. And then two, activity drivers and feeder routes. And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve action item six. A1, A, B, D, and then two, B and C. With there not being any awards under C and no conflict of interest and no bus drivers.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second?
Got a second. Any discussion? We'd just like to thank the businesses that did donate to the district, Grant County Title and Dollar General. So thank you all for those donations. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next on our agenda is our individual action items. Under B, consideration and approval of the following policy advisories. These are the policies that we had a first reading on our last meeting, beginning with Policy Advisory 128 and going down through Policy Advisory number 140. And I would, I guess for this, we had, as I mentioned, the first reading last month. Was there any concerns regarding any of these policies from administration?
No, sir.
In their form under the first reading? No concerns? Any questions, comments from the board? I would entertain a motion to approve these policy advisories, 128 through 140, as, I don't know if you would say, with one motion or as a whole?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve under the individual action items, B, consideration of the approval of the following policy advisories. Policy Advisory number 128 to Policy Advisory number one through 140.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving action, individual action item B, consideration and approval of the following policy advisories, beginning with Policy Advisory number 128 through Policy Advisory 140, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next on our agenda, under individual action items, is C, consideration and approval of a board retreat facilitator contract. And with the need for us to appoint two additional seats, I will make a motion that we tabled this item until we fill the two vacant seats on our board.
I will second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of tabling item C, consideration and approval of a board retreat facilitator contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes to table. Next on our individual action items is a D, Board to Consider Approval of School Board Vacancy Announcement Qualifications and Media Plan. And this is for Ms. Voskis' board position. Basically, what I had provided to each of the board members is the same draft that was provided to us previously for Mr. Wex, resignation of his position. And so this is the announcement. And of course, it's gonna be for Ms. Voskis. Her district number was three, I believe. And the question before the board is, how long do we want to leave this vacancy announcement out there? How long shall we accept the letters of interest?
So the one that's out there now is open till December 1st. And we gave them three weeks. So this could potentially be posted tomorrow. Is that fair?
Um, it would probably...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it would be, because it would be Monday, would be, so it would probably be posted Tuesday.
Mm-hmm. So that would be the 20, 28th?
Let me look at my calendar here. So if we were, if we were able to start the announcement on the 28th of November, I think that would be possible.
Mm-hmm.
So we could have it be, the announcement posted on the 28th. And this last one, we...
We did it for three weeks.
We did three weeks.
I would, I would say that we close it on the 12th, or if it needs to be a weekend. The 12th would be two weeks. And then that gives us time to schedule the next week. We need to do that like by the 19th or 20th.
So if you, if you say that...
The 19th is our regular meeting.
19th.
So close it on the 12th and do the interviews on the 19th?
And I should look at our calendar. We do have a special meeting already on the 6th of December for Mr. Wex's position to appoint, interview and appoint on the 6th. So...
The 12th would give that new one enough time to look at. But we wouldn't even be getting him until the 12th. So we could get him sworn in.
Well, with the, for Mr. Wex's position, we would do, we would have a special meeting on the 6th of December. We would appoint that person that evening, most likely. And then if you say, accept letters of interest for the District 3 position up until the 12th, is that what you're?
That's what I said. That would, that would be two weeks. But if someone thinks that we should end it on a weekend or something, I mean, we could even close it on the 15th and still interview on the 19th.
Interview on the 19th? That sounds reasonable to me.
That's two and a half weeks.
And that's our next, so then we would appoint at that next regular meeting for the vacancy for Ms. Voskis' vacancy, correct?
Yep. And we add it until December 25th to get that one done for the 45 days. So that's well within that deadline.
So on this, on this letter, we would say, no later, we would change that month to With the interview and appointment to take place on the 19th of December. Mr. Brown, Ms. Hernandez, any questions on that?
Sounds very reasonable.
My next question is, I don't have a school calendar in front of me, but what does that, are we in school until?
Would it be the...
The 21st?
Yes.
The last day of school is the 21st or the 20th?
20th. That's 2016, 17, so that's the wrong calendar.
Okay.
Are you following?
So that...
It's the 20, yeah, the 21st there.
21st, they're out. Okay.
So that's still, we're still in session. So that's it.
That, I think, is a fair timeline to allow folks that are interested to submit letters and then gives us just really a date to verify that those folks are residing in that district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So for our action item, our individual action item...
Thank you, Senator.
Under D, consideration, to Board to Consider Approval of School Board Vacancy Announcement. So we've got the announcement letter for District Number Three. Our vacancy will plan to be posted on November 28th. We'll get this posting out with a deadline of the end of business, which is 4:30 on December 15th, to submit a letter of interest and confirm that they're eligible. And I, and I probably should just mention that to be eligible for consideration, you must be a registered voter, you must be 18 years of age, not be a convicted felon, and physically reside in District Three. So I will entertain a motion to approve action item D, the approval of the School Board Vacancy Announcement Qualifications and Media Plan.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve individual action item B, Board to Consider Approval of the Board Vacancy Announcement for District Three.
Got a...
With the item D?
Or D, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. We've got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any additional discussion on that?
I don't think we discussed the media plan, but it would just follow what we were doing with District Four right now, correct? Do the same type of media plan, get it on the Facebook, get it on the...
Website.
Website.
Website, the, and the press.
Okay.
And then be, of course, available or posted down here as well.
Yes. Perfect.
Thank you for that. So we've got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. And then our, last on our individual action items is item E, Board to Consider Establishing a Date for School Board Candidate Interviews. And we are looking at our next regular meeting for this district vacancy number three. So we would be looking at our December regular meeting of December 19th. Any other comments or discussion on that? Depending on the number of qualified applicants, could be a busy agenda, but I think considering the holiday and all that, it's probably a better option than doing a special meeting.
Right, because our deadline would be the 25th, which is Christmas. And we're getting it in just before everything kind of closes down. And we may have a day of little room.
Mm-hmm.
That's a better, best option.
Okay, very well. So entertain a motion for individual action item E, Board to Establish a Date of December 19th during a regular scheduled meeting to conduct the board candidate interviews.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve December 19th as the date for School Board Candidate Interviews.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next on our agenda is future meetings and proposed agenda items. Please remember, we have that special meeting on December 6th. That will be to interview and potentially appoint a board member for Mr. Wex's vacancy, which was District Four, I believe. And following that, our regular scheduled meeting, December 19th, with a work session at 5:30. Regular meeting to start at 6:00. Also, just FYI, the Board Institute meeting in February 8th through the 10th is in Santa Fe. The New Mexico School Board Annual Conference is April 7th through 9th in San Antonio. And the 2018 School Law Conference is the June 8th and 9th in Albuquerque. Any other comments or discussion on those meeting dates? Very well, next on our agenda is open public comments. Ms. Hernandez, do you have any submission for public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to our next item, which is Executive Session Closed pursuant to 10-15-1, H2 through H9, NMSA 1978. H2 Limited Personnel Matters Staffing and H7 Attorney Client Privilege Litigation Reports. Mr. Brown, do you have information for those items for the board to go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Very well, I'll entertain a motion to go into, I believe it's a roll call to go into executive session.
Mr. Magno?
Yes.
Mrs. Monteverde?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes. All right, and the time is 7:31.